So I'm going to call the meeting to order and read the suggested disclaimer. In accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Information and connection links to the meeting are provided on the town of Plymouth's website at plymouth-nh.org. All right. I will then read the role. Phil?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
She's unmuted.
I was nodding here.
Looking at my list. Carl?
Present.
Mark?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
And Rebecca, I am also here. That makes two, three, four, five, six, seven of us. That's great. Welcome, Mark. You're all approved and confirmed by the select board, right?
I am. It was a high-pressure situation, but I found my way through it.
Awesome. Hey, Jules, do you have a sense of how many people that are here are here for the zoning session versus the hearings that we have?
I think most are here for the hearings in Longview Farm. Can you speak? I'm not sure.
Yes, here for the hearings.
Okay, cool. All right. I was gonna see if we had a lot of people banging down the door for the zoning. I didn't want to make them wait. But I will put the, move the meeting minutes from the meeting at the end of September to the end, just so we can get through with everyone else here. Is that okay with the board?
Yep.
Yep.
So we will start with a non-binding site plan review from Joseph Carter. Since this is not a public hearing, I don't think I have to read it into the record, but this is at the spot on PID number 213-028 on Tenny Mountain Highway across from Yeton Road. Do we have the applicant that wants to present? And I should say to the rest of the board, since I wasn't here at the last meeting, I know we saw a lot of these cases in a non-binding discussion. So if I'm missing something, please step in and fill me in on what I'm missing. So, but do we have someone from the, do Joseph Carter here?
Yep, we do. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Is here.
Okay.
How are you, Mr. Carter? Can I do the presentation? Sure.
Rebecca, are you ready for Mr. Carter to speak?
Yeah. Yep.
Please. Good evening, planning board members and members of the audience. And I'm here with a preliminary subdivision on Route 25, almost across from Yeton Road. There's a two-lot subdivision. This is only a preliminary plan. But lot number one is 4.2 acres and it's on the westerly side of the existing entrance on Route 25. There is an existing entrance that's been there since 1950. And that's a 4.2-acre lot. And on the right of the east is lot number two, 5.8 acres. And that goes all the way back to the river. And the lot on the east side has 230 feet of frontage to the sideline of the proposed road. And every lot has 444.13 feet of frontage. And I did submit to the New Hampshire Highway Department, Department of Transportation last week for an application for a driveway permit. And they did a preliminary review. You did not see any real reason why it wouldn't be okay. And other than, they're gonna have a site review next week on the site. Other than that, you didn't see any particular problems with it.
Okay.
And I also have been in contact with the DES, the shoreline permit, that would go along with the other two, other three sheets that you see in there. But I don't know if you want to talk about them tonight or not. But basically, it's a two-lot subdivision with a 50-foot right-of-way going down to each side of the lots. If I could answer any questions, I'd be glad to. We have it up on there. It's good.
Yeah.
So we're here to talk about the subdivision or the, or the site plan post-subdivision?
I can't quite hear her.
I believe her question was, is this pertaining specifically to the subdivision? Or do you have questions about the site plan once the subdivision is approved?
If you'd like me to, I'd like to talk about the site plan if you're interested or answer any question. But I wanted to explain the subdivision first. And if we went into the, is it okay to get into the site plan?
I think that's what we had on, that's what I was expecting.
Okay.
If you'd rather sit down, if it's easier.
I've made some, I've made some little changes on it, but they're not permanent. We'll use the one that you have on file. Yeah, within the subdivision, at the, on the left lot, which is on the west side, I show four buildings with a, could be eight condominiums, two to a building, garden-type. And they're golden age, by the way. They're not, and it's gonna be a condominium with the homeowners association, so there'd be no cost for any maintenance to the town at all. All they would get would be the taxes. It would be all self-maintained by the homeowners association. I did a similar project at Bow Lake in Stratford, New Hampshire, and it turned out very nicely. It had 31 lots with a marina. Actually, the marina proposed in the back here where the camping lots are. But I did it with a marina and 13 docks. And they're all up in the $700, $800, $1,000 category. Probably the best subdivision. It has two gated entrances. And I actually lived there myself on the water for 40 years.
I used to live there and I can't, I'm trying to figure out where it was.
You know, ever here Trinity Church, the campground?
Yeah.
I bought Trinity Church of Boston back in 1970, 78, 85 acres. And across, that's, it was on a cove and I also had 700 feet of frontage.
Before we get too far down the road of other sites, I just want to bring it back to what we're looking at here. We've got a few things on the board, on the docket today, so I just want to make sure we're being efficient. Whoever's controlling the screen, can we see the subdivision with the, or the site plan? I mean.
Okay, that's the, if you want me to explain that, that is the road, it's a loop road with those little shapes. Each one of them is the parking area, which is all piece-stone and for the, for the vehicle that would tow the trailer or motorhome. And the back, and that's the only area that would be cleared. Those are all the cleared areas. The road is a total road all the way in from Route 25 and around the loop where it connects back is 1,400 feet. It intersects about 600 feet in, so you only have, there's no dead-end road. And off on the far east side, it is shown a boat ramp, which is, I think I gave you a plan of the boat ramp that I did at Bow Lake. And this is, this is half the size. I did a double-wide 20-foot roadway and concrete roadway and boat ramp. This would be 10 feet wide, I suppose, and enter into the river for canoes, kayaks, or wading and fishing to get access to the river. From, the land drops from, at that point, about seven feet to the river. And at the, both southerly end, it's about 14 feet. So the only way you'd have access is that boat ramp, really, a straight drop. The road is 30 feet wide, all piece-stone, right around. And all those little shaded areas you see in each parking area is piece-stone. There'd be no paving. And if you look at the profiles that are on sheet four, we've tried to follow the contour so there'd be very little excavation. It would just take off the topsoil and put in piece-stone. And when you end up doing all of this, you'll be able to actually have more groundwater going into the ground than it was before. It wouldn't be the necessity, and we can prove it engineering-wise, that it'll be a better collection area than it was, because a lot of water will be going through all this piece-stone, not running off on the heavy turf that's there. The road is staked. We've staked out the road, all the way around, excuse me. And I met today and walked the walkway to propose River Walk, which is shown all along the river, which is between 10 and 20 feet from the river. He could be cutting it through a six-foot wide so you could walk it, not this, by next two weeks, if you wanted to walk that. The road is staked with stakes, the road around, and it's all the tree line. Can I go up there and show you where the tree line is?
Yeah. Well.
Actually, the tree line right now is this line right here.
Okay.
Someone's gonna have to translate what he's saying.
All right.
He's showing us the tree line and Julia is tracing it with the cursor.
But can you see that with the cursor?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
The road is staked, this is a straight run in from Route 25 to here, and that junction is staked, and this is staked around about 350 feet.
Okay, so, so this is, there's a lot, I guess I'm a little confused. There's a lot with townhomes and there's a lot with the campground. Is that right?
What is the condominium, Dave? Condominium, four bit wooden?
Would you mind speaking into the mic so she can hear? Uh, that one?
The microphone.
I think she'll be able to hear you better if you speak into the mic. Just at the mic.
Take it with me.
Sure. Yeah, if you can, yeah, as far as you can get.
This is the boat ramp, right here. And at that point, that's about a seven-foot drop to the river. It increases though about 14 feet all the way after that. And if I'm jumping around too much, let me know. But, and this was to be the service building. But was it clear with you on the tree line where it is?
Yeah, I'm just, I wanna make sure I'm understanding that this is, my question is, we're looking at, there's two lots, right? One's the town.
One to the east and one to the west.
One's the town, one is the townhome lot and one is the lot with the campground, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so there'll be two separate site plan reviews?
Yes. And what I'd like to talk about tonight is this one. I'd like to do this area first before the condominiums. But that road serves both. And there's a side road off of it if you go the other sheet, the first, the first sheet.
So I think, I mean, you, we can see a lot of the details in the plans. I guess what would be helpful, I mean, unless there's other questions from the board, what would be helpful, I think, for us to know is what kind of input do you need from us?
I didn't, I can't have in trouble with my hearing aid. I don't have, it went bad on me, so.
I think the question was, what, what input are you looking from, looking for from us as a board?
Well, for now, I'd like to, as approval of that preliminary subdivision, so I could come in with a digitized copy of the subdivision. And if I could get a preliminary approval of the condominiums, or at least this one. I want to work on this one, on the campsite, so it'd be open this, this following spring.
So we don't really do a preliminary approval? We can certainly offer feedback on what we'd like to see on plans when they are presented to us as a full site plan review, but we can't really offer a preliminary approval?
Not at this point, anyway, I assume.
There is no such thing as a preliminary approval?
Right.
Would the next step be that I would come in after your comments with a definitive plan?
This, this format, this, this kind of design review and conceptual consultation, by definition, is non-binding. So we can't tell you that you have preliminary approval. But this is a good opportunity to ask questions and look for feedback on, if you have specific issues you're concerned about, or you'd like feedback from the board on.
Yeah, I'd like whatever feedback I can get. That's the best I can do so far. I've tried a lot of different ideas on it, and this one seemed to be about the best for me, anyway. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I think I've talked about it as much as I can. The condos on the first sheet are on this one right up here. They're built into the bank, and to take advantage and the, yeah. I've rearranged the buildings a little bit, but the, there's the building, and one, two, three, four. What I've done in another plan, which you don't have, is I've consolidated them five feet apart with one walkway through. But these are on the level of the foot and a half above the flood level. And these are all two-story. One story, they're lower elevation, which is a foot and a half above the flood, is a unit. And the top level is accessible around the road. And they're on the second level, so there's a unit below and a unit above, two separate units. And they're built into the bank to get as little excavation as possible. And I also moved them back a little bit on another plan that I would submit, so that there'd be no work into the wetland area. The roadway is right on the wetland line, so there will not be any fill placed in the wetland. It's not wetland, it's in flood, flood plain.
I suspect there may be an issue with building separation. That might be something where we might need our fire chief to review this and make sure that there's adequate space to access between buildings. And if there was to be a structure fire, that might be something that we need to look at in potential, especially if, if they're, if you, you mentioned that they're only five feet apart at this point?
Right. Yes.
That might be a safety issue for, for access during a fire.
And one of those five-foot areas is enclosed, so they have a stairway down through. But I can make it whatever with the fire chief desires.
It may also, I mean, there, there might be other opportunities for you there. You may, you know, if there's firewall separating each of the units, it may reduce the need for that, but they may want more separation too. And that may be something that, that, that we can only review once we have an application.
Yeah. I'd like to meet with the fire chief on it and come to some conclusion of what he'd like.
I, I hope I'm not taking over for you, Rebecca.
No, 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 I appreciate it, Phil. So I think that, I mean, I'm assuming the, the fire, the fire chief is making sure that the buildings adhere to code. So I feel like that's, I mean, that's their job, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
So, so I'm sure there's some resources there that can help determine that. So are there, are there questions from the board?
When you spoke to DES, did, did the topic of an alteration of terrain permit come up for the campsites?
I've sent in a preliminary copy of it and asked them to contact me or I'll come in for a meeting.
So, so you're planning to go ahead with an alteration?
They're both into the, into the subsurface system on the state level, and it's also into the Shoreland Protection Act.
Okay.
So I'm gonna be meeting with them in a week or so. But what I wanted to bring out is that the condominiums is probably something that wouldn't come up for another year or two. The one I'd really like to concentration, concentrate on is the.
Subdivision and the campground.
Subdivision and the campground, yes. I'd like to, if possible, get into this for this spring.
So I think something for the board to think about is, because there's no subdivision yet and the applicant has come for preliminary discussion, once there's a subdivision, we can't really think about these, this whole site as a contiguous thing. So we have the opportunity now to look at this as, you know, big picture before it's subdivided. So if we have any comments about how these two, these two sites interact, there's no subdivision here, we can certainly offer input. So any, any comments or questions from the board?
I don't at this point.
I have one comment, just looking at the, there was a picture of the boat ramp from another site that you did, and certainly for canoe and kayak launch, that looks a little beefy for, you know, what we need here. So I would encourage you to do something smaller that's, you know, more designed for canoes and kayaks and not necessarily launching boats with trailers, because that's not, I can't imagine launching anything with a trailer and the Baker, especially this year. But, yeah, just think about.
I have trouble, she's.
She's offering feedback on the size of the boat launch. She's, she's observing that it appears to be designed for a trailer and that the Baker River probably won't support trailer use, but she, she was encouraging you to consider the, the design to be a smaller scale that would be more appropriate for carryable boats like canoes or kayaks.
The intended use was for canoes and kayaks.
Okay.
I didn't know, it shouldn't be drivable, actually. You'll have to walk down with a canoe or kayak. But I can make it any width you want. I showed it as 10 feet. I can make it five feet, whatever, whatever you wish, but it would be excavating, it's seven feet to the water and it's a shot drop, so, and that'll be before the shoreline permit. They could excavate that ramp and pave that, not pave, but actually they're concrete logs that are joined together so they can flex with the, with the weather, with, with anything. And that's what we used at Bow Lake, where they drop it three feet every winter. And it's been there now 25 years. That picture of yours is 25 years old. That was just taken, that, the one that you're looking at was taken about a month ago, month and a half ago. Anyway, whatever the suggestions are, I would bring them up in the next meeting if I can get on the agenda. And if I could, I'd like to get a copy of the minutes of the meeting, because my, I'm hearing isn't the greatest.
Okay, I'll put that down.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I just kinda have a question. I mean, for this gentleman, his first step, he should just get the subdivision before we can do anything anyway, right?
Yes, but he can come in with the subdivision, subdivide it. If we approve that, then we can move on with the site plan review at the same meeting.
At the same time, okay.
Am I assuming I can come into the next meeting with a definitive subdivision plan?
Yeah, she said subdivision, and then we could.
Then you can talk about.
Go ahead and go and.
By that time, I will have input, I'm sure, and probably have my permit, because it's an existing entrance. And I will also have, talk with the DES, both two or three divisions, and get some preliminary ideas. They may have some changes they want to.
Jules, do you know when you would need a butter list and everything to make the notification requirement for the next meeting?
Yeah, so the application deadline is October 27th.
Okay.
So, and that would be, yeah.
October for the.
The 19th would be the next regular meeting. If that's.
Of November 19th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Steve? What's the next one? October 27th?
October 27th is the, I can get it to you after, but October 27th is the application deadline.
Okay.
Hang on a sec. He has a question here. I think these are sort of administrative things that we can maybe take care of after the meeting.
I'm just wondering, before we move on to other applications, is there an opportunity to open it up if there are butters who are here, who have questions, just for the benefit of the applicant? Or if we aren't gonna do that, because this is informal?
That's a great idea. I think that's, I think that's a great idea. So, yeah, are there any butters in the audience this evening that would like to speak or ask questions? Just reminder that the questions need to get directed through me, the chair. So if.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, this is John Nelson.
Go ahead.
At 815 Tenny Mountain Highway in Plymouth, New Hampshire. We're in a butter diagonally across the road from the subdivision we were talking about this evening. And I've got a couple of questions, and then I think my wife has got a couple of questions. Okay. Two things you might want to consider is, there is a shooting range over there on the other side of the river. I'm not sure that's the one that the police use or not, but there's quite a bit of shooting. And also, I believe the campground is underneath the approach to the airport. And that, we, that, we, we just wanted to point those out for that subdivision part. And on the, where the condos are going, we are concerned about the lighting. And my wife is concerned about the signage, which I don't think is something, we just want to make you aware of it. And also, the, the traffic on Tenny Mountain Highway down here is extremely busy. At one time, Route 25 was one of the busiest east-west highways in the state of New Hampshire. Not only do you have the cars, but you have between 100 and 200 heavy trucks. You've got two of the, three of the largest sawmills in the state of New Hampshire up in Wentworth and Warren and Rumney, taken into consideration. And there's multiple tractor trailers that come down through here in the mornings loaded. And then they head up to Rumney. And there's also a chip plant up there, too.
Okay. John, I'll just let you know that the driveway permit, that's DOT, so they determine what's safe and unsafe as far as entry onto a state highway. So that is something that certainly noted here, but that's something that's permitted by the Department of Transportation.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out for the guy doing the developing.
Yep. And certainly, we would require lighting plan on the, on the final plan for both the campground and for the, for the townhomes as well. So the lighting is, is something that we can, we can ask the applicant to give us a plan for that and we can comment on that.
Okay, now, my wife is asking, sometime you're gonna have a site plan review on the 10th of this month, is that correct?
It looks like the applicant, it depends on when the applicant gets it in, but our next, if he hasn't submitted an application, our next regular meeting date is November 19th. So.
Oh, November 19th.
That would be our next, we've got a regular meeting on the 15th of this month. It's the third Thursday of every month, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Other questions from butters or anyone else with comments about this project or potential project?
Yeah, this is Nate from Longview Farm, where a butter's right across the river. And we were just, you know, concerned, the beach and that whole piece is right across the river from one of our irrigation pole sites. So, you know, there will be times when irrigation tractors are running for hours and hours at a time for us to irrigate our crops. And, you know, they can be somewhat noisy. Another issue we thought was, you know, right across that river are, you know, a significant amount of our crops, wheat corn and et cetera. And, you know, just the thought of, you know, people staying at these camps, wandering across the river, you know, is kind of a concern we had. And also just wanted to see if the board would maybe reach out to the Rumney Planning Board, because we had heard they had had issues with the Fatherland Trust on some projects they had tried up at Stinson Lake and et cetera, without getting proper DES permits, et cetera. So just wanted to put that out there, I guess.
Okay. All our approvals come contingent with any state and federal permits that are required. So we might offer an approval, but that's pending, a wetlands permit, Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act, Shoreland Permit, alteration of train and things like that. But, but certainly noted. So I think these are good things for the applicant to know, especially as he's trying to grow a business on the site, that there are some, some noise, noise issues, some neighbor issues. So I would encourage, oh, sorry, are there other butters, other people that want to speak about this, this project?
I'm sorry, one question. Nate, your last name, please?
My last name is Nate Everts, E-V-E-R-T-S.
Okay, thank you, just for the minutes.
Thanks, Nate. Other, other comments about this project?
No, I just wanted to point out that the current plan you're looking at.
Hang on a sec. Any other comments from the audience, not from the applicant right now?
Not from here.
Okay, and I'm just gonna say one more thing to butters and those folks that are here tonight. Really appreciate your comments and your coming out to this. I would encourage you to come to the public hearing as well. Since this is a preliminary, non-binding discussion, this is, it would be helpful to get your comments on the record as well. I think it's especially helpful for the applicant to hear your concerns, so as he shapes these projects, he can take those into consideration, but, but please come to the public hearings as well. All right, Mr. Carter, go ahead.
I just want to thank you for your consideration and letting me appear before the board tonight and assure you, the plan will be in the best interest of both parties. Actually, we've got a big buffer of about 100 feet of wood, heavy woodland between that road that goes around and the river. And incidentally, this was the original Fletcher Farm that went across the street and up. And the deed is to the center of the river. And obviously, we're not going to use the river, other than to get canoes and kayaks in. But the 10 acres is just the land area, not including the river. Okay, that was a question. But I want to thank you for letting me appear before you and I'll be back next month, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you and have an image of who you are to go with your voice.
I gotta get my hearing there for it.
The calls have been tough to not, to not have your presence. So thank you for joining us in person.
Thank you.
All right.
On the record, if anybody wants to see what type of work I've done, if you go down to Stratford to Point Trinity Estates, you'll see my last big project. I'm a professional engineer, a land surveyor and a developer. Timmy retired. Don't know when to quit.
Yeah, right.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, we have a site plan review, Harbor Homes. And we'd like to build two outdoor pavilions at Boulder Point on 108 Boulder Point Drive. PID number 213-005-003. This parcel is in the industrial commercial district zone. And I think we have the representative from the applicant. And I believe you were here the last meeting as well. But this is how we'll work it with the public hearing. We will do, allow you to make a brief presentation on your project and we will then, the board needs to accept your application as complete before we can move forward. At that point, we'll perhaps ask more questions and then open it up to a public hearing and then ultimately the board will, will rule on your application. So if you want to go ahead and make your, give us a brief, brief presentation of your application, that would be great.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name's Henry Och. I'm the Chief of Operations for Harbor Care. The, the topic at hand is the construction of two outdoor pavilions. One pavilion is for all season use. The other one is open air for two, two season use. The driving factor behind the construction of these pavilions really is to provide areas where the veterans that are residing at 108 Boulder Point can come together for group sessions, general meetings and gatherings outside. The facility itself, within, within the 30-unit apartment building does have a couple of meeting areas. They are, they are small and not really conducive to coming together as a result of the, the current conditions with, with, with the ongoing pandemic. The veterans at Boulder Point receive a multitude of services via the Office of Veteran Affairs. They have recently have had some pretty significant constraints as to what they can do onsite. For example, they used to be able to meet with, with residents in the building, in small offices, in their, in their apartments, but now as a result of the conditions, they, they cannot do that. So they have set up temporary tents outside to provide counseling and treatment services for veterans. But that is not really a conducive place to, to do that. It's not, it's not very, very private. These are open, open tents that you would see on the beach. So we want to create something that's more appropriate for individuals to come together and meet. And that is really the primary intent of the 25-30 enclosure in the back of the, in the back of the facility. So the project itself is currently, is getting assessed for, for pricing. We're hoping to use a, a local builder, local builders for the, for the work. And we're very excited to, for the possibility of providing this additional resource for our, our veterans up at, up at Boulder Point.
So just looking through the application now, I don't see any significant waivers that are necessary for the requirements that we have on our site plan review regs. Any questions from the board about the completeness of this application? All right, are we prepared to maybe move forward and accept this as complete?
I'll move that we accept the motion, the, the application for site plan review as complete.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? I should add, Steve, this is the most number of planning board members we've had in a while, but we're still at seven, so you're good to vote as an alternate. So. All right, so we've got a motion on the table to accept this application as complete. I'm going to now read the roll. Phil?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And me, Rebecca, yes, aye. Okay. Any other questions from the board beyond just looking at the application? About this project, anything that would help clarify, to help us make a decision? All right. Sorry, did someone have a question?
My own, I did have one question about the, the construction of the enclosed pavilion. Are there going to be any sewage facilities or is that, is it just the structure with walls?
It is, it is the structure with walls within, within the structure. We anticipate having a storage area for coats and a small vestibule to have individuals clear their shoes or boots of.
But, but no water or sewer?
No.
Right. Yeah.
All right. And just thinking about our zoning ordinance that I'm trying to find here. We changed our zoning ordinance last year to allow for multiple buildings on one, you know, one, one piece of property. I mean, this is already in multiple buildings as well. So I just want to make sure we're thinking about, about that. Yeah, Steve?
At the last meeting, the informal meeting, I think I shared that this seemed like an appropriate use and in support of the, the residents of the property. Initial site plan had had accessory buildings when we first talked about it. And so I'm in full support.
Yep, I agree. Other comments, questions from the board before I open it up to a public hearing? All right, it's 7:08. I am going to open up a public hearing. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak of any nature about this project, now is the time to do so. I don't think there's anybody on the Zoom call, but, oh, Frank?
Yes, Frank A. Miller, and I am speaking in support of, of the project. And I think it's a reasonable, appropriate use of land and would be very helpful for the utilization of the facility. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Of any, in any nature of this project?
Can I make a motion?
I've got to close the public hearing first.
Oh.
But if it is somebody else that would like to speak about this project, then I will close the public hearing. And no other comments or questions from the board? All right, Bonnie, you're up.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application.
Thank you. There is a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Carl. Any further discussion? All right, I will read the roll. Phil?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Steve?
Aye.
Rebecca, aye. Okay, project is approved. Thank you.
Mr. Upes.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. I'm going to just move right. I just started hearing myself. I'm going to move right into the next site plan review. Star King Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, the 101 Fairgrounds Road is looking to install a solar energy system at PID number 208-003, 2.94 acre parcel that lies in the agricultural zone. Ted, I see that you're there. Same deal for you as the previous applicant. Please present your case. We'll make a ruling on its completeness and then we will open a public hearing and make a ruling on the project. So go ahead, Ted.
Hi, Rebecca, and the rest of the board. I did present a couple of weeks ago to describe the project. I'll do the same sort of very brief project. It's 36 kilowatt photovoltaic system. It will be ground mounted on the cul-de-sac behind the Star King Fellowship. It will meet the 30-foot setback off of the road and off of the other property line. We do have to cut just a few trees to, mostly because the trees have overhanging branches where we want to put the array. The solar array will connect underground roughly 250 feet across the gravel parking lot to the building. It'll be connected behind the meter and will provide about 100% of the electricity use for the facility.
All right, any questions from the board about the completeness of this application? Anyone like to make a motion about the completeness of this application?
I'll move that we accept the application as complete.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, tell me the roll. Phil?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Mark? You're muted, but it looked like you said aye.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Rebecca, aye. Okay, so application is accepted as complete. Any other questions from the board before I open it up to a public hearing?
I do have, we have a letter to the board from Lori Cass regarding the PV array. And I believe there are some questions raised about access to the property for commercial use, specifically that any access for commercial use beyond Fairgrounds Road. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's how I answered the letter. Jules, do you have more insight into that?
Yes, I had several conversations with Ms. Cass. She is the, as far as I can see, not the agent, but the property manager. So I kind of looked into the covenant and we haven't, we've heard nothing from the actual owner of the property. So it's not clear if this is a problem. But there is a note in the covenant that says that it's enforceable by any neighbor, a butter, or neighborhood association. So I said it's not really in our purview.
Yep. Ted, have you seen this letter?
No.
Okay, so we should, this is a matter of public record, so we can, Ted should be able to see this. Really, we can't do much about what's happened, the access off that property. Yeah, that is, like you said, Jules, beyond our purview. We can improve this application and the, the method by which, and the access by which it gets complete is a little beyond what we can deal with. So if the rest of the board concurs, then I suggest we just move forward and make sure that the applicant gets a copy of this letter. And then that way the abutting property owners can, can work out this issue together. Does that make sense to the board?
Yes.
All right, so Ted, we'll, we'll make sure you get a copy of that letter.
Thank you.
But I don't think there's any reason why we can't move forward with this application tonight. So. All right, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. 7:15. I see Frank standing up, so go ahead, Frank.
Yes, Frank Miller, and I stand in support of this application project. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Anyone else that's in person there in the town hall?
Nope.
Okay, 7:16. I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Any further discussion from the board?
I think in general, I would like to support projects like this in town wherever we can. I think having PV capacity distributed amongst many small properties is a great solution for power needs long term. And I would encourage more businesses to consider this.
I would like to agree with you.
Nice. All right. Okay, so if there's no further comments or questions from the board, someone could maybe make a motion for approval?
I would like to make a motion to approve this plan.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, I will read the roll. Phil?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Rebecca, aye. Okay, motion is approved. Thanks, Ted.
Thank you guys very much.
Have a nice night.
Nice.
You too, thanks.
All right. So are there a bunch of people there in the town hall that are here to talk about zoning?
A bunch of Franks.
Yeah. I am disappointed, but not surprised. Also would like to really appreciate the awesome still that has been circulating of me on social media. Hopefully that would entice people to click on it alone, so on the video that we did. All right, so how do folks want to move forward? Do we want to give a brief, brief presentation of what we're doing for all those folks at home that are watching, perhaps? Do we want to kind of have a discussion about how we're going to publicize this more? I don't know, any feedback would be, would be welcome.
I think that since this is our first public hearing discussing this, we should probably make a presentation that anybody interested can find on TV. And just kind of introduce it and just discuss it. And then hopefully if we see any interest in this, we'll have more participation in future hearings.
Yep.
That seems to make sense.
I'm off the hook for having to talk about it. All right.
Not yet, no.
Yes, Steve?
I would just keep it brief. I think you did, you and Brian did an excellent job with the video. I would agree with Phil that we should use this time in case there are folks watching at home. But I thought the, the letter in the paper was great. I thought the video was great. I, Phil and I had great reception with the select board. Mary Ann was there. Had a good discussion. And I think maybe we just do some more of that over the next plus.
And I did not get to a press release, but I will do that for our next work session. So, but I did think that, yeah, the letter in the paper, I think, was sufficient for this time around, but we do have another, another crack at it. So. Yeah, so I guess we can just start by talking a little bit more about the, the reasoning behind why we're looking at zoning. Phil and Steve, please jump in. And I might put either of you on the spot to explain a few things, so it's not just me, you know, talking away. And maybe you guys will be lucky enough to get an awesome. Maybe you guys will be lucky enough to get an awesome still for the next, the next video. But, yeah, so. Our, the story of our zoning update and work really begins. With the master plan, and are we finished updating the master plan in 2018? And that was a several years worth of work on the part of the board and a consultant. And it was the work of our Plymouth residents, voters, property owners. That were able to provide input on all areas of land use in the town of Plymouth. So we had several work sessions. That were focused around different subject areas. We had a larger, more general work session. We also had a survey that was mailed to, I think, everybody on our, all our property owners and our registered voters. So we got some great feedback, and it really, what we then, our job, so the. Work of the master plan doesn't end when the master plan is done. It's really just beginning. So what we came out with was a list of. Almost 200 recommendations, and a lot of them centered around our, our zoning ordinance. And what we really heard. Folks in Plymouth say is they value the rural nature of the town. They like the downtown area, and there are certain areas that seem better for commercial development than others. So we took that information and really started looking at our actual zones within the town of Plymouth. So, what we've done is, is really took that information. Talked about where we want to see, where we think the most appropriate place for commercial development, and how do we protect? How do we protect that rural nature, which is really important to, to our residents as well? So I think now it's probably good to, anything to add, Steve or Phil, to that before I show the maps? So we had a subcommittee. Steve, Phil, and I have been working to. To actually look at the, well, the, what the different zones should, we think they should look like, and both sort of as far as what's allowable on them. And also what they look like physically on a map. So I'm gonna. Share my screen. If I can remember how to do that. Okay. And I have not updated this since we've corrected some of the zoning, the, the GIS maps of our zoning, but I think generally it's correct enough. This is our existing zoning. The large blue area is the agricultural zone. This is what we. This is the. I think I have it mislabeled. That's the industrial commercial zone here. Here's the highway commercial up here. This is the single-family residential, and we can zoom. We can zoom in a little closer to see some of our downtown. The downtown area, the civic institutional. And then our strange little. Blip across the river there. So what we did is looking at. We created some new. Lot lines and thinking about, or not lot lines, zoning districts. We. Really thought about where we'd like to see, and what, where the town thought they'd like to see commercial development. Certainly around Tenny Mountain Highway, and I'll note that I, I say this all the time, but. Market Basket's actually currently within the agricultural zone. It's not within the industrial commercial district out on Tenny Mountain Highway. Oh, there's also seen, it seemed like anywhere along a state highway seemed like a good place for more commercial development because of access. Certainly along the Tenny Mountain Highway corridor, there's access to sewer. Sewer goes up north Main Street for a little ways as well, I believe. So water and sewer infrastructure can certainly allow for more development as well. Okay, so. I know everyone is on the edge of their seats, so let's look at these new zones. So what we did was we. Took the existing industrial commercial district on Tenny Mountain Highway and expanded it following. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit, if anyone feels. Nauseated, I apologize. I'm gonna turn this off for a second so you can see the old line. We continued this line at about 500 feet. Along the river. This is estimate, this is me drawing on this map, so it's not a perfect 500 feet. We then took. What we're, oh, and we, we gave a potential name to, what do we call this? The Tenny Mountain?
Mixed use.
Excuse District. And what we see in this area is. A place for increased density in this area, where there's the most commercial development opportunities in this area. Phil and Steve, please jump in if I'm missing something. We also took the two areas along state highways, Route 3A and 25 here. We drew this line at the entrance to Tenny Mountain. Ski area, and this is roughly a 500-foot line on either side of the state road. These are supposed to butt up evenly, but again, I have a, you know, not perfect at this. But this allows for greater commercial development. Not, we wouldn't anticipate seeing as high a density in these areas. We also did a. From the Bridgewater Town Line to the, into downtown area, where it wasn't always already village commercial. We did another 500-foot line along the side of Route 3 South and then. And Route 3 North of town as well. And that is. That, the whole highway commercial area was replaced. By, so it's a little more than 500 feet, but that was replaced by the, what we're calling the Gateway Districts.
In my mind, Rebecca, I think we were taking a lot of the things that were already in the highway commercial. And, and applying them to other areas and just renaming it as, as kind of a gateway. So, you know, any, any of the main thoroughfares that people are on on their way into town have more potential for. Development of businesses and support services. So that, that's kind of my interpretation of that, if I can contribute that as well.
That's helpful. And just to note that these new areas. Except for this highway commercial up here, for the most part, they're getting taken out of the. Out of the, what's currently considered the agricultural zone. And then the final district that we looked at is what is the remaining. Chunk of the agricultural zone, which is all this in blue, anything that's not in the new districts that we identified. And we renamed that the. Oh geez. Open space rural residential zone. That's, these names are tentative. And in this area, we imagine less dense. I think we're increasing the minimum lot size to two acres instead of currently at one. And the idea is to really protect that rural nature of the town that across the board, people are really in favor of. There is some allowance for if there's subdivisions across a larger parcel to allow for smaller parcels within that subdivision, so that. We don't have the exact mechanics of this, but so that you, we still will allow for. One-acre lots as long as other parcels within that subdivision are larger. And that allows, sometimes if you make too big a minimum lot size, you really lose the. The affordable acreage, the affordable lots. So we're trying to allow for there to be affordable lots within the mixed. Open space rural residential, but still preserving that rural character. I feel like I've been talking a lot, so please, Steve.
You're doing a great job.
An excellent job. I just wanted to build on what you were saying. Your example about Market Basket and all those associated developments in that area being in the agricultural zone. That's what we're trying to get away from with this change to this open space rural residential district. That intensity of commercial use that is possible there because of water and sewer and access to a large road. Isn't the same throughout this district. And we wanted to make sure that we're not pushing high-traffic, big-impact uses out into rural areas where, that are primarily. Residential and forestry and recreation. So we're trying to make sure that each of these districts has a purpose statement that's clear, that relates back to the master plan. And to what people would like to see happen in that area, and that the uses and the dimensions that Rebecca just talked about relate to that as well. And it's all still draft, so if people get engaged now and they have different thoughts, we can incorporate those thoughts.
Yep, and just so the folks that know, that at home know that we can't move forward with this officially without voter approval at town meeting in March. So, we're hoping. Maybe pleading a little bit for public input now, so we can shape something that works for everybody in town. And so we want your input now, so we can shape this, present it to the select board. Which we've done once already, but we'll present, imagine the final product. The final amendment to them as well, and then we'll present it to the town. So, so we need input.
Rebecca, one that I really would like input on is, is that our, our names are somewhat tentative. And, you know, I, I personally, I like the name highway. Sorry, Gateway, Gateway District. You know, the open space rural residential doesn't necessarily flow. And it might be, I don't know if there's something there that, that any member of our board or the public would like to contribute. And then the other one is, is, you know, we've been working with kind of a. Tenny Mountain Highway mixed-use area, which is very specific. But I do think that, you know, it gets at the fact that there is some residential use in there. There's some commercial, there's a little bit of industrial, and, and it isn't, you know. I think it's a perfectly appropriate place for commercial development. But, you know, recognizing there may be some residential, you know, we just saw a proposal that might include some residential very close to there, if not in, I think it might be in, so. You know, I'm, I'm thinking about the potential site plan for the eight, eight townhomes we just saw, and it's, it's either right on the border of that or just past, I forget, but. So names, if.
I have, well, I have a question. You were talking about changing agricultural zone to, what was it?
Open space residential?
Open rural, right?
Rural residential?
Open space rural.
What do you think Rebecca? I forget what our working, definitely, working title was.
I'm not, I don't, I think, I think it was open space rural residential, but I think that was the one we were least enamored with.
We had said, we had.
So.
We had said one or the other, the open space district or the rural residential district.
All right, so changing the name of it won't change. I mean, I keep.
It doesn't change the definition or the allowed.
So if, yeah, somebody's got three, four acres, they put their house on and, and maybe their son or daughter wants a horse or something like that. Is it gonna be, are they still gonna be able to do that as they would in, in agricultural?
So, yeah, I don't think, I don't think the change in use, we're not proposing any changes in uses with the change in name. So, you know, agriculture and forestry are, are basically allowed wherever they are currently. Right?
But we are proposing some changes in uses. You, right now in the agricultural district, you could have a car dealership. And if you wanted to do that in the open space or rural residential district going forward, you'd have to go through the conditional use process and show that it's in keeping with the district. Having a horse and, you know, carving out a lot for a child to build a house is fine. That will continue. But it's not as wide open with commercial uses, and it doesn't promote industrial uses.
Yeah, the animal part of it was my main concern.
Sure.
I think we run into trouble with the names of our districts in general, because I think, because it's called agricultural. Agriculture is more of a catch-all than anything else. And this is where, when we do, we're doing a lot of our work sessions, I suggested, let's just replace them with numbers. So we're not hung up on what the name is and what that means. We need to think about what the actual use is. So. So forestry, agriculture, these things, those are things that the town valued as in this area. So it's important for us to allow for those to continue. The change in name of the zone is, yeah, I really just, it's, it's that only. It's a, it's a change in name. It's the tables of uses that we need to think about. And which brings up another issue is, if you look at some of the, the district sheets that we've created for these zones. You won't see a long list. Like we have in our current zoning ordinance of. And I, I don't want to call it an exhaustive list, because an exhaustive list would be pages and pages and pages, and that's part of the problem. Is it's hard to interpret a zoning ordinance when you're very specific about certain things. And you get applications that don't fit with any, within any of those, those uses. So there's less lists of approved uses, and we're really looking for. A lot of the intricacies of different type of commercial development to come out through the site plan review process. And I think the one, not the one question, hopefully there's lots of questions, but one issue I think that we'll, we'd like to address is. What happens to people who are, you know, people who have existing property. Where the zoning, the, the uses, the minimum lot size, how that's changing. And I think, Phil, you might want to jump in if I, if I botch this, but really, anyone on existing properties. That have current non-conforming. They're non-conforming. Phil, do you want to jump in? I feel like I'm gonna say something.
No, it's fine. I, I think it's, it's hard to be accurate with this language, but it's. If, if the zoning changes and in an existing use becomes non-conforming, it doesn't mean that that use has to stop. A non-conforming use can be continued. Changes to non-conforming uses can be a problem. Or that, that might require approval, you know, in the future, but in general, you know, if, if you're looking at a, let's say, you know, you look at the, a business on Fairgrounds Road. If that's, if we don't allow new businesses by default on Fairgrounds Road, it doesn't mean that existing businesses have to move. It means that they can continue, and that if they plan to expand, that expansion might have to. You know, it might require a variance or a conditional use permit, but. You know, it's, it's those changes to use that are gonna trigger. Review, but.
Isn't, isn't that what they used to call the grandfather?
Yeah, so, yeah, that, in general, what I'm talking about is the concept of grandfathering, but that grandfathering isn't really well-defined, but yeah, that's, that's the concept.
See, this is just showing my age.
Right.
To be approved, we're not gonna have a code enforcement officer driving around being like, ooh, we changed the, that person, you know, we're gonna ding them, them, no, it's gonna be, you know, when they come back to make changes to those existing.
Yeah, you know, the, the other applicant, the other place it may come into play is, is, you know, if somebody owns. Let's say somebody has a subdivision that was recorded some time ago with one-acre lots in the agricultural district. You know, this changing the zoning to two-acre lots is not going to render those lots unbuildable or undevelopable. It's just gonna mean that you can't create new lots. At one-acre size. Any new lots being created have to conform with the zoning, which would now be two-acre minimum lot size in that zone.
All right.
Has there been any community feedback at this point, since the video went out and there was the letter in the paper? Have we received any? Comments or no?
I've had some friends say they've seen me on TV, but aside from that. Not Plymouth people either, so.
I think I have public here who would like to comment.
Ooh.
Would you like to open our hearing?
Well, yes. Two things. One. There is a group of Main Street business community. We've gotten together to talk about our marketing, public relations of. Our new Main Street, and then also the new Gateway Districts. We're using. We're going to try to expand the, our former Gateway to the mountains. And we're coming up with new, also known as, or Gateway to. Other terms. We haven't settled on a particular one, but we are using the Gateway. As a logo for the marketing. The, and the other part that I've been working on personally is trying to. Do this, public relations. The intent and purpose. Of the zoning names, because the sensitive issue, I could tell you with the agricultural crowd is. There's a misunderstanding or perception about if your land is rezoned to something that has, appears to have more value, your tax rate's gonna go up. So that's the one biggest element that, that people be resistant to. And I can tell you, my, with this Gateway Zone, my. My property, I have 65 acres that's in two zones. Now it'll be in three, in three zones. And. I had to rezone my property to put on. A heliport on my property, so I was in compliance with the FAA. Requirements to meet the town's master plan. With this new zone. I don't know where I would fall in, in preventing me from continuing to. Enhance the, my heliport. If I end up with a piece of property that's got three labels. And is a conflict of use or expansion of existing uses. So. But. We are meeting on, as far as the marketing and public relations of who the town of Plymouth is. And how do we move forward with a lot of these? who the town of Plymouth is and, uh, how do we move forward with a lot of these programs from previous planning board, uh, plans of things we were trying to change, like the zoning name ordinances. So, uh, that would be the one thing, I think the coming up a way of describing, uh, I don't know if it confirmed that there is no change in value as far as the appropriation or assessment of a property in the agricultural zone than it would be to the new label zone. You know, um, cause everybody knows that if you're in commercial zone and you have a single family house that happens to been there, you're still assessed at a higher rate because you're in a commercial lot. And so that's what the biggest resentment, resentment has been.
Steve?
I think to that point, Frank, we're not upzoning anyone. Um, so we're trying to clarify the agricultural zone, the balance of the agricultural zone that's left will be more focused on residential and other uses as they exist out there now. And the Gateway District actually is very close to what is already allowed in the agricultural zone. So we're not adding, we're not adding new uses that would potentially increase value or the perception of increased value in any of these districts that I'm aware of.
Well, I think that that has, that should be one sentence or paragraph, uh, in the public relations part of this program because, um, that's where a lot of miscon- misunderstanding and, and people don't, haven't said it on these meetings and don't read the planning board, I mean, the master plan or the land use regulations. You know, ma- if they don't know the subject, they'll vote no. So.
Right. Seems like that's the kind of trouble we're gonna have.
Right. So, um, I'm trying, that's my project is to try to put a lot of this in visceral, visual aid things. And so I've literally taken the master, uh, planning land use regulation apart and just looking at the intent and purpose of our, uh, land use regulations. Uh, trying to get those out. I've highlighted them, separate them out and then try to talk, connect those goals on the objectives of our land use regulations to a visual picture of what people, uh, say, think they like about Plymouth and why we want to maintain and enhance our quaint New England character, if you will. And, um, try to connect them to any label, uh, like the Gateway, uh, and or other labeled zone. So, uh, I think we need, we need to get some, uh, pictures involved with, um, these new, uh, labeled zones. So I'm not an artist, but I think that's one of the things that, uh, we're having trouble with and communicating with the residents.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Chair, I'm sorry, um, I have the map. I, I didn't know if you wanted to see it and just, uh, comment on how, you know, I did it in, uh, GIS map here, if you would, wouldn't mind. Thank you. Uh, what did I do with it? Nope, that's not, huh. Uh, go ahead. I'll, I'll pull it up. You can.
I was just gonna say that we'll be discussing this again on November fifth, the first Thursday in November. Um, I think also you can call, email.
Oh, is it?
Or you'll, uh, write letters with comments and questions. So please reach out to the town hall. If you have questions or comments, we'd be happy to, um, take your questions and comments in person, or if you wanna, um, ask them, we will, we will address written in, in-person comments early November.
Just, uh, yeah, and I'm, the, the only reason I, I bring it up, Madam Chair is because, um, it's really, uh, something you have to all see together, I think. And it's gonna be really quick if you can just approve or, or disapprove. I think, um, Steve brought something up about this. This is, this is the updated map that they've, um, ArcGIS is updated. So these are correct zones, I believe.
It was setbacks of five hundred feet.
Yeah, and I put the, but I didn't, I didn't know if you wanted to keep that, knowing what's going on here, so.
Oh, are you suggesting it might be easier just to go to the river in that area?
Well, no, we had decided that we were just gonna take the old highway commercial and replace that. And that was what was north of town. So we were just gonna replace that. The five hundred foot boundary was south of town. Um, anywhere is agricultural. Uh, and then the five hundred foot was on the, um, east of, or west of Yeton Road, Rumney border, south on three A to the Tenny Mountain Highway, or Tenny Mountain, um, entrance.
Okay.
And then five hundred feet, um, north of Tenny Mountain Highway, all the way to where, um, the ICD hits the, I think, I think it's a brook there that it's running, or no, it's Millbrook on the west side. It looks like it's maybe on some sort of brook on the, on the east side. Is that Claybrook there? Um.
Baker River.
Oh. It's along with the Baker? Okay, yeah. So where the Ba- oh, yeah. So where the Baker crosses the Tenny Mountain Highway, it's five hundred feet to the north of, um,
Right.
Of, uh, of Tenny Mountain Highway.
Anyway, I can send this along and you can, uh, if you want to mark it up and, uh, send it back and I'll.
Thank you.
Change it up. Thanks.
I saw that you had sent this, but for some reason I couldn't open it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'll send it again.
What it was.
Uh, I think I, no, no, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Um, are we still have minutes to approve? Are we good with the zoning?
Yep.
Okay. So I was not at the last meeting, but, um, we have minutes to approve from
September seventeen.
Meeting on the seventeenth of September.
Well, thanks.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as written.
I have one thing to say.
This, this is the time.
After my name is says tardy. You just made me feel like I was back in high school again.
I didn't read it.
Carol.
You didn't, you didn't join us late though.
Well, not.
When we started the.
Yeah, I guess. Cause you didn't, yeah, I know.
Perhaps there's a better way to represent that.
Yeah, but I said, oh my God, I'm back in high school, tardy again.
Um, Steve, did you have something?
Yeah, in my reading through the minutes, um, I think there's an important thing that we pointed out to the applicant of the campground in our discussions that wasn't in the minutes, and I hope he recalls it, but it was about whether or not he could line his roadway up with Yeton Road. I just didn't see it in the minutes.
It was a point of discussion.
Yeah, and it's probably good that we have it in the record, even if it doesn't happen, at least we did bring it up.
Okay.
That was it for me.
Okay, so we add, um, something about the board discussing lining up the driveway. I just want to make sure we get the wording correct, lining up the driveway with Yeton Road.
Yeah, I believe we asked him if he would investigate the possibility of aligning his new, uh, right of way or boundary line with Yeton Road so that it would create a four-way intersection.
And he had said it would be, it's, I went out by the other day, I looked, it is a big, big gap.
It would be a lot of, it would be a lot of fill, and I believe that's in the environmentally sensitive zone, which means that that fill would have to come from somewhere else on site, right? So that there may be, it's, there, so we're getting into details, but I, I think he's given us a proposal that does not include that. But we did ask him to look at it.
So.
Yeah.
Um, so let's add in the minutes that the board asked the applicant to investigate lining up the driveway with Yeton Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That work? Yeah.
Or it, it's, it may be a road more than a driveway, but either way, yes.
Access to the site, the main access to the site.
Did agree that he would consider it, but he said the mitigation of the compliance of that was maybe not as bad as having a. You know?
Yeah, that is true, too. Yeah.
Okay, so any other edits to the minutes? Bonnie, do you want to change your motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Uh, yes, I would like to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay. Is there a second? Oh, whoops. I kept moving on without, yeah, thank you, Steve. Um, any further discussion on the minutes? Okay. I'll read the roll. For some reason, I need a list of people to do this. Um, Phil?
Hi.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Do you in?
I'm gonna abstain. I wasn't part of the the meeting.
Okay. Carl?
Hi.
Mark? Oh, you weren't a member then either. Um.
I'm mute, but are you abstaining?
Yeah. Mark is abstaining. Steve?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm abstaining as well, but that still gives us enough folks, um. All right, so minutes are approved. Um, and then Jules, there's an administrative matter?
Yeah, I'll try to be really quick. I know it's like, um, a couple of things. Uh, Peppercorn, I'm gonna just share the screen for that, ready to go, darn it. Um, Peppercorn would like to move into the old, uh, True Colors space down there, the print shop. Um, and we had talked about, Brian and I were a while, and I believe that it's been brought up to the board about possibly having an administrative site plan review um, for, for such items as moving retail to reach, within retail within the Village Commercial District. So, uh, just, and I sent along that document, um, for, I didn't know if we wanted to just approve the Peppercorn, um, as a change of use and, um, so that they can move down the street. Or do you need them to come in for site plan review?
I think if we're gonna approve anything, it's gonna be a site plan review. There's no other structure for us to approve something. Um, I think we can discuss it here. Um, my question is, was True Colors considered retail before?
I think so. That was part of the discussion that we had talked about. I mean, they have some retail. So, yeah, that.
There, there was a counter. I mean, I'd, I'd walked in to pick up.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they do have a counter where you can walk in and order and pick up. So, I mean,
Right.
They do work there, but there was certainly a retail space in the front of the store.
Okay, exactly, and.
At least in my end. I, I don't know what was permitted or what, what we have on file for a site plan for that space, but I know that my, my perception is that there was retail space there.
True Colors was a, um, commercial business or retail level for printing services.
So it wasn't. Printing services required something kind of unique, too. There was some weird thing with definitions of printing services in town in the, in Village Commercial District. Um, so does the board think that this is, does not require, I mean, this is another great reason for us to have our administrative site plan review, especially in the Village Commercial Zone. There's no structural changes to the external part of the building. But unfortunately, we don't have that right now and we've been working so hard on our zoning ordinance that we haven't been able to attend to it. Um, so does this, um, does this, is this considered a, not a change of use? A, a print shop with some retail stuff to a, um, cause I think it's good. It's going to be, I guess the question is, we're thinking, envisioning Peppercorn as it is now. Is there gonna be any change of use from what Peppercorn is doing now? Is there gonna be a cafe? Is there gonna be any other thing that's, that's different? Um, cause if we're starting to talk about any type of food service, I think that, that certainly triggers a site plan review.
Um, I have a question. I can remember, uh, us talking about this before, and I thought that the, the, uh, caf- the little bakery that was there was gonna go in there along with the Peppercorn?
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, yeah, I heard a cafe as well.
So I kind of think it changes it a little bit. So we need you, so I guess it's not so much like, is it Pepper? Yeah, it's not, is it Peppercorn? Like, what's the use that they're trying to put in there? Um, I don't know, is it?
Have we reviewed the existing site plan we have on file for that space? Because there've been several changes to that. I mean, if it's one property, it's Grotto, it's Penny Baker Glass, it's Fat Fish. I'm assuming that's all one lot.
Yeah, it's all owned by one person. It's a multi.
So, so there's, there are many commercial uses on that lot already. I would say that a cafe and grocery store or, you know, could, uh, I'm not sure, health, health food stores, is that what Peppercorn would be considered? Um, I'm, I'm not sure it's out of line with the other businesses that are in that space already. If you look at the site, site of, you know, the amalgamation of businesses on site. So, um, uh, unless there's specifically called out spaces within the building and very specific uses that are approved on the site plan, I think we have a hard time, um, saying that the use of that space is a change of use. And so we're not looking at the, the Peppercorn site plan, we're looking at the site plan for that building and, and is Peppercorn fitting in there in line with the proposed, or with, with what we have approval for that site, right?
Well, so we've definitely been doing this on a business by business type of thing. So we did Fat Fish, we did, um,
Etta.
The Grotto. I don't think we did anything with the, um, real estate that went in there, that the bakery determined was just subway to the bakery, um, to the, what, I can't remember.
Boofy noodle.
Yeah.
Um, so we've been doing it on a business by business type of thing, and I think that's typically what we do in the downtown areas, not by the lot, but by the, the space. Um, I mean, I'm also thinking like the, the bubble tea place, we did that way as well. Um, Steve?
Um, I think, I tend to agree with Phil with one exception. I think with the Grotto and Fat Fish, there were external changes. If, or if the, for this patient, if all changes are internal, then I think it should be good. If there's gonna be changes out front where the pavement is, then I think for consistency, we have to have a site plan, even if it's just in one meeting. But if you give other people a butter's a chance to speak up.
I, I, I'm not familiar enough with our site plan regulations as well, but, um, do we require a full site plan every time there's a modification to an existing site plan? Or do we allow only those elements that are changing to be submitted?
I'm not sure.
I would.
As far as the. We allow pretty basic site plans.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, if there's external that's on there.
External will be when the new location of Peppercorn will be their sign.
Yeah.
All, all modifications are fully internal.
Right.
And, uh, obviously, uh, parking spaces that are allocated to.
I can't hear what Frank's saying and I, I, so, um, but I think, hang on, that wasn't necessarily an introduction or invitation to speak, um, but go ahead.
All right. So all, anything that would be allocated by parking spaces, which would be an external event, would by the owner of the whole building, uh, allocating any parking spaces to that spot that's being lent, rented or leased. But other than structural elements, it's all internal, save their sign, which would be outside, obviously on the wall. There would be no other change of, uh, structural use and, uh.
Steve?
I think we're in dangerous ground now. I think Juliette did the right thing. She brought this up for us to talk about, but now we're starting to speculate what their site plan and what their changes might be, and that's not fair to the applicant or the butters.
Right.
All right, so, um, I mean, I tend to, I tend to think that it is pretty minor, um, however, we have no structure for the minor. I think when we start to have this much back and forth, that almost tells me we, we need to go through the site plan review process just because we can't answer the question. So, and if there's an unknown, I mean, I hate, I, I, I don't want to make people continually jump through hoops that we're trying to eliminate. But when we have this many, this much back and forth, I just, I feel like the answer has to be go through the process, but, but I'm not the only voice here. So if we think that, um, I'm also happy to move forward and say, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, just, and so for the future perhaps, we'll, I'll ask them to come in. Um, but you know, if you wanted to think about this, perhaps administrative review and, you know, if, if it's a qualified use in Village Commercial, perhaps with some of those things that you mentioned, but, no, it's. you know, if, if it's a qualified use in Village Commercial, perhaps with some of those things that you mentioned, with no external changes. I can add some of the things that we said here today and just for review.
Yeah, I think we just need to keep, keep this going. I think I can't, it's, it's hard to look at this as we're trying to come up with a, an answer for, for the next applicant, because I think we all know we need to do this. It's just.
It sounds like we simply need more information. It could be very simple, but more information is necessary for us to make a decision.
So.
Very good.
Steve?
Just so we don't lose the piece, the, the draft that Juliette just shared, should we put that on the agenda for our next work session, and then we can just have a public hearing for a site plan review change? So if everybody makes changes, then we can roll it forward to a public hearing in December and get that on the books finally. So I appreciate the fact that she drafted that.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I, I do as well, I, yes. Thank you. Let's get that on the agenda if we can maybe tack it on to the end of our work session next in November. And I think that's a good time to do that. Hopefully we'll be so busy with public involvement on the zoning ordinance that we won't get to it, but but if we have time, we will, we'll do it then.
We can pencil in some, some space in their meeting for it.
Yeah, I think we also got a little hung up, or I know I got hung up on all the stuff in the master plan that addresses issues in the site plan review. And so it, you know, but we can make changes multiple times on our site plan review stuff, so, so let's get this, get this done, so, yes. All right, so we need more information from Pepper Corn to make a determination, particularly around any external changes to the project.
Okay.
The, the property, right? Is that what we're saying?
So my thinking is that if, if our administration evaluates that the proposed use submitted by Pepper Corn is in line with what's on file for the existing site plan, that we don't require a site plan review and that they should be able to go ahead. But if there are external changes or if their proposal is not in line with what we have on file for the site plan, that we would require a site plan review. Does that make sense?
I think that sounds good, because at this point, they're looking at getting on the agenda for, I mean, that's our, I mean, our November meeting at this point, so I know they're trying to move by the end of the month, so, I mean, that's neither here nor there for us, but.
You have the resources you need to investigate the existing site plan?
Okay, yes, yes, definitely.
Okay.
I just have to contact, I haven't actually spoken with, Brian did, so I'll reach out and just get the details.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I've reached my, my max.
Do you have anything else on the agenda for us?
I just have to mention Lincoln, another cell phone tower.
Oh, notice of regional impact.
Yes, Lincoln.
Forty mile radius, right?
Anybody's interest, I have it.
Anyone want to make any comments on the cell tower in, going up in Lincoln?
I do not.
All right, how about someone doing the honors this evening?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll read, oh, I guess I still have to read the roll because of the way this has been done. Okay. Motion on the table is to adjourn. Phil?
Hi.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Hi.
And I am also I. All right, thanks, everyone.